Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Dawson County Board of Commissioners' Work Session, day of January 19, 2023. Welcome to 2023. This is our first meeting of the year. I also want to welcome our new commissioners, Commissioner Alexa Bruce and Commissioner Seth Stoudes, to be with us. We'll get right into the new business. Just before we get started, I'll tell you that we are renovating the sound system, so it ain't working right now. You'll hear me talk loud, and so if you have any trouble hearing, just raise your hand and I'll talk loud. Okay? All right. So we start out with presentation of school resource officer position request Sheriff Jeff Johnson.
Good afternoon. Yes, I would like to present the request for the addition of a school resource officer. Been in contact with them. Obviously, the board has as well, and past conversations with the previous board has expressed a desire to add an additional SRO to the school system. We support that as well, and certainly believe that that's a great need for us. We have the support of the Dawson County Board of Education, the speaking of the district and the county. Basically, it'll be another position, be a school full-time position, position that basically will be housed at the high school. We're looking to put some areas of campus just for better rough coverage.
Questions for the sheriff?
My conversation, I believe it was going to go towards the new buildings that the school system built with the Ag Center and the construction piece. And that campuses have become so spread out that additional coverage is just what's needed, I think.
Right.
How many resource officers do we have at the high school?
Just one currently.
Okay.
And this could be fifty-fifty, so there are two more layers than what the previous one passed.
How many, just from a safety outlook, I guess, how many would you recommend for our high school in how quickly it's growing?
Well, and that's just a question to answer. We can't find anything or even figure anything out there that kind of doesn't affect them on the schools to determine having. Obviously, we feel like we have the correct presence that we have, the better chance for good surrounding instances there. I wish I could be a teacher on that, I just imagine.
The more you marry, the more it's coming.
I think we are, from my knowledge, not all school systems have one at every school. We're very lucky that we've got one at every school.
Right.
Yes. Remember, public school in Dawson County, we don't sign SROs. We are less.
Are you fully staffed with the current SRO positions?
We currently have an opening, but we're going through the process to fill it. It takes some time to backfill, unfortunately.
Other questions for the sheriff?
When will that, even, you're, I don't know when that building is going to be open. Is there anybody here for the school? Tell me.
Comes here.
It's finished it now, so the, all that'll be open in the next couple of years.
So you'll be able to, once you fill that, it'll slide right into that.
Yes. And we do have, we do have interest already with certified, almost double the SRO certified as well, so we're ready to pull the trigger.
That was from someone in-house already, or are you?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions for Sheriff Johnson?
Does that require, do they have car, they have their own cars, don't they? Is there additional cost for equipment?
Yes, we'll have five in one internally for that.
Internal, okay.
Other questions? Okay? Move on to number two. Sheriff has this one as well. Presentation of retirement award of firearm and badge for Sheriff Lieutenant Mitchner Long.
Yes, well, after thirty-two years of dedicated service, twenty-one of those being in Dawson County Lieutenant Mitchner Long has retired. His last name is officially December third, Thursday. As a matter of fact, in the, in the special work, even retired officers can still be interbed to Tarr County, obviously, for, they are allowed period with retired credentials. So what we're asking, in order to recognize the Lieutenant Long's dedicated service in Dawson County, we're asking that the board, with some of his primary sidearm, that will let his badge, so that we can issue those to him at a later time, more informed, certainly.
Questions for the sheriff? He's done well for us for many years.
Yes, he has.
Great employee. All right, we'll move on to number three, which is also the sheriff's presentation of special weapons and tactics swap vehicle purchase.
The board, this is something that we, that was approached in the past year, so forth, but it is an expensive item, swap vehicles we're looking at, it's around two hundred and eighty-five thousand. We're looking at it from a squash purchase. Obviously, we still have needs each year to fill protocol needs. So find that lump sum and pay it outright, we just, we just don't have that capability. So we're looking at the purchase finance. So what I'd like to ask, well, give you a bit of background too, and you have to say the thing we bring in to do our swap thing. Currently, we have fifteen members, we have five additional assistants that are going through the process now to join us. So I asked two of those guys to come and sign. They're good group of guys, they're highly trained group of guys, they train twice a month. We've been able to provide them with some of the latest greatest technology, the gear, but we don't have a vehicle looking at it. And that's our problem where we're at right now, that we send them out to a scene, we're sending them out to something that doesn't have any legislative protection. So the vehicle that we're looking at is basically a swap type vehicle, it does offer protection, it does offer the stability to transport numerous team members, and it also supports another ability as far as entry goes. So what I'm asking the board to do about is to, one, to allow CFO to request quotes from banking sources for the best interest rates and terms, two, to a primitive cooperative agreement through the federal general service management contract, and move to the issue purchase over once funding is secured. So that's what I'd like to ask the board to consider for this purchase.
Questions for the sheriff?
Don't, we do have a vehicle now, but it's not as nice as this one.
We have, we're currently using a, I think it's a federal surplus ambulance that we've had a lot of candidates with, but again, it's just a converted vehicle that we use to transport with.
How many events have we had in Dawson County that are in need for this truck, for the one that we have now?
Well, I don't have enough for that. Obviously, we've had high-risk warrants, we've had some things of that nature. We're primarily thankfully, our team's been kind of, this has been the primary thing that our main to use for.
Has there ever been an issue in the surplus ambulance that you're using currently where something happened and where they weren't protected in using it?
Thankfully, no.
Okay.
But again, if it goes out, there's absolutely no, no guarantee.
Guaranteed, okay.
We have had a call, neighbor jurisdiction in the past, and we're there on for a few years. And again, this is just a campus position for the past year. This is part of our business plan, something that we've been wanting to, hope that we'll never need for any events that will be prepared. We do anticipate this being part of the past, particularly for years with regular services, hopefully a few toilets.
In reference to the quotes for finance, how many years are you looking at?
This is, as the chairman and I would say, six years, five, six years.
Throughout this squash period?
Yes.
The verbiage that we have for vehicles is, vehicles and equipment. You guys have spent a lot of energy and effort, along with several other people who are in to work on our radio system that is in desperate need of upgrade. And my concern at a macro level, yeah, it's always great to give the best stuff that we can get to our guys, put their, their, you know, their on the front lines. But we've got, we're staring down the pipe at a multi-multi-million dollar gap in coverage for finances for this radio system. The way I understand it is that squash fund could be allocated to using, to, because we're going to upgrade all the radios in all your cars to the new, the new network or the new, what was it, eight-hundred megahertz? So if we wound up doing that, that potentially could impact that budget or that bucket quite a bit. What's your thoughts on prioritizing those radios versus other items?
Well, you know, both of them are life-saving pieces of wood. Obviously, you have to communicate on the flip side of that. You know, population increasing, obviously, our residents, more re-designing are increasing. Just thankfully, we have, it hasn't been that bad thus far. So I can't give you an all-expansial name, but Mr. I believe both, both probably.
Other questions for the sheriff? Okay. All right, move on to number four. Sheriff's going to do that one as well. Presentation of request to accept 2023 Criminal Justice Coordinating Council K-9 grant.
And, and board, this is the same grant that we received for them this year, top of the major, it seemed like we paid this about two thousand, or somewhere there about. Dawson County is the, the decision of the K-9 grant. For those who may not be familiar with our K-9 program, we have a pretty little less K-9 program here in Dawson County. So we're certainly proud to be currently have three way knives that serve this, we're looking forward to, will be at elevation, very high quality, highly trained, K-9 equipment service. As part of this grant, we are responsible for other campuses. I won't say that roughly about any campus is responsible for, but obviously, if they call, happen, they can just respond to it, go help them, but in return, they did the same for us. So I'm asking the board to, to accept this as an amount of one hundred and twelve thousand two hundred and four dollars. There is no local match, and we would like to ask the board to help me with that, we just have deadlines.
Questions for the sheriff? Thank you, sir. I'll go with moving that. All right, next up, we have presentation of compensation of court bailiffs for Administrator Jason Steves. Jason.
Thank you, board, for just a few minutes of your time. I'm here with the latest recommendations from the Hall County, or the Dawson County Grand Jury to raise the rates for bailiffs, but I'm happy to tell you it doesn't impact their budget for 2023 because of the ARPA funds that are awarded to the equipment system. This would raise their daily rate to maybe five to one hundred dollars.
Questions for Jason?
Mr. Commissioner, I'd like to recuse myself from this, given my father isn't.
Okay. No. You can, you can recuse after, let me get rid of the book. If you're good, for now.
And the request, Chairman, would be to go on that tonight.
Okay. Questions? Vote, doesn't impact our budget, the reason for voting on it now is what?
The code section calls for the grand, the grand jury to set the rate subject to the governing authority of the board, because it's not a budget item, but the code section does call for the board to weigh in and approve of that change.
You want to do it tonight, primarily because you want, you're already started and just need to give it?
Yes, sir.
But ARPA funds are taken care of through all fiscal year twenty-three.
Yes, sir. It would be about five to six thousand dollars in fiscal impact, and that's absorbed in the ARPA grant. So there'd be, that's the additional cost, but that cost would come from the ARPA funds.
So an annual increase that we're anticipating after we move beyond the grant is five to six thousand dollar variation between what our current, and you're going to ask for that in your next year's budget?
My intention would be to ask for that in ARPA funds again in twenty twenty-four.
Right.
And then in twenty twenty-five, move over to higher, higher budget.
Okay. Other questions? Okay? I'll go with moving that.
Thank you.
Next up, we have presentation of Family Connection Physical Agent Request. Family Connection Coordinator Rebecca Bleach. Rebecca?
So I would like to thank Melissa for lending to Dawson County Family Connection. I think you have the opportunity to present our Dawson County Family Connections' request for Dawson County Government to be our physical agent for the Division of Human Resources fiscal year, which is effective July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirty of twenty twenty-four. So this partnership, Dawson County Government being Dawson County Family Connections' fiscal agent, I believe is going to be successful, as it was established back in nineteen ninety-nine. Dawson County Family Connections' mission is to provide leadership through collaboration for the well-being of families and children in Dawson County, and hopes of achieving our vision that all children in Dawson County will have the opportunity to become successful, productive, and self-sustaining adults. Because of partnerships like the one that we have with the county, we are better able to serve the community, particularly as a pertaining to our two current strategies of which are minimal improving family stability and improving women's wellness. Dawson County Family Connection is very proud to be able to offer the community a new resource directory, kidship care meetings for families that are taking care of children that are not biologically their own, foster care support, and hopefully foster care equipment. And we're proud to be able to provide events such as stuff the bus, and reverse advent calendar, a family fair, and routine maze. Collaboration is the key to these successes, and would not be possible without support from entities like Dawson County Government. I said I appreciate your time, and I hope that you will vote in favor of being Dawson County fiscal agent through June of twenty twenty-four.
Questions for Rebecca? It's working? Thank you. All right, next up, we have presentation or request to accept hazardous mitigation assistance grant, MRS Search Director Troy Lee, Chief Lee.
Good afternoon, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
The county's current hazard mitigation plan expires in March of twenty-four, which seems like a long way out, but it's an extremely extensive document. FEMA has granted the county a hazard mitigation assistance grant, which is a seventy-five, twenty-five split. The federal portion is twenty-two, five hundred, and the local share is seventy-five hundred. This is, this was done four years ago. It's something that the FEMA just gives out to the, the local governments because it's like a very extensive report, and that's why we're starting on early. So tonight, I'm asking that you accept the grant and sign the agreement.
Questions for Chief Lee? Thank you.
Thank you.
Did we get off, Chief Lee, off subject for that? Did we get anything set up for that generator for the shelter?
I have two calls in to FEMA. I'm waiting, I'm about to email again today, and the lady that was supposed to call me today, she did not, so I'm going to call up again. Apparently, we applied for a grant that was tied to a storm that came through, and she said there was one other piece of information they needed, so I'm actively looking on it.
Cool. Thank you. Next up, we have presentation of FY twenty twenty-three Legacy Link Contract Addendum Number One, Senior Services Director Dawn Jonathan Dawn.
Good afternoon, Chairman Thurman. Welcome to you, Commissioner. You are really not new to some of us. Welcome aboard. So this is the first addendum for FY twenty twenty-three contract, our contract starts from January, the, July the first through the end of June, with Legacy Link and Legacy Link. Just to give you to an update, they're the ones that helps provide our financial support for meals and transportation and different things like that. So we have a split with them, which Dawson County does pay a majority of, but we get funding from them each year. And this is just an addendum to their original contract. This is where they have some extra, ARPA funds, it's actually thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars. We are going to take this money and put this money towards some different services. Five thousand dollars to provide two actually new wellness classes. We want to divide one to our older sedative senior classes, and then another one to our dementia class. And then ten thousand dollars for equipment to be used for our wellness program, and twenty-two thousand to be used for material aid to approximately a hundred and eighty of our clients, and that's to help any clients out in the, in need, whether it be for groceries, financial support for any bills or anything if they need the requirements. And, and then an additional for caregiver funds of seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars to add an additional client that we hope we will get. We've got someone coming in at ten-thirty in the morning, so this will help with the salary for our resident care coordinator, and that's the total of thirty-seven thousand, two thirty-six. If we could go ahead and get this ratified tonight, please, that would be great, and then as quick as Legacy Link is able to send us those funds as we can use it.
Questions for Dawn? Thank you, ma'am.
No match on any of this, this is all ARPA funds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good with moving that?
Yes.
Okay. Next up, we have presentation of tennis and pickleball court renovation, Park Recreation Director Matt Payne. Matt?
Greetings, Commissioners, Chairman, and the new Commissioners as well. Welcome aboard, it is nice to finally work with you all. On the two thousand twenty-three budget, we presented to have some tennis courts redone, and obviously, that was one of the projects that we had kind of set aside until some other funding could be, could be secured. So one thing that you new Commissioners will probably hear quite a bit is how incredibly talented Ms. Vicki and her staff are, and they do a fantastic job of saving us money. What we've done is, from some squash six projects that were, that have already been completed, there was money that was left over. So with that, we do have some money that has, that we could set aside to get these tennis courts redone. Now with that, we are also going to be, the reason that I'm saying to restructure some tennis courts and some pickleball courts is because that is an incredibly huge need for our department right now. Pickleball is exploding, and we could build courts all over this county, and they would be full tonight, literally, it is that popular. So I'm going to be looking to, with your guidance and your approval, I'm going to be looking to convert a couple of our tennis courts into pickleball courts, and then actually where they can be used for the, for the same thing, maybe even the ones over at Veterans, just turn them into pickleball courts. And with that, we have set the number of, what I would request is the Recreation Department, Recreation Department is requesting the usage of these funds not to exceed ninety-eight thousand dollars, what we have left over, number not to exceed that, and to restructure these tennis courts at Veterans Park and Rock Creek Park to not only have tennis courts, but to have pickleball courts, and at the same time, all new nets, all new playing screens, completely reevaluate what we have.
Questions for Matt?
How different are the two courts, between pickleball and tennis?
You can definitely, but, well, obviously, there would be different colored lines.
Yep.
The pickleball courts are much smaller. The net is a little bit higher for tennis, but for the recreational player, it's, it's a non-issue. So you can have both pickleball courts and tennis courts on the same court. Now, I'm not going to do all of those courts, because we still do some tennis leagues that they can't play on courts with extra lines on it. So we're leaving some courts strictly tennis, but we're going to try to add some pickleball courts to some of our existing tennis courts.
Do we have, I know we have, you said tennis league, do we have a pickleball league?
No.
Okay.
I could, we could do one tonight, if we have anybody to do.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this will come with registration for pickleball league and stuff like that? I mean, if it would accommodate an additional league for Dawson County?
Well, you can't play pickleball on those courts that were on tennis courts, they would have to have their own separate pickleball courts.
Okay.
We do have two of those at Rock Creek, and if we had two at Veterans, we could do some small tournaments.
Okay.
And that would be something that I think would be a lot of fun for our guys to put on.
I believe the city is building, another building pickleball and tennis courts in their little pocket park, so I don't know, hand-me-in.
They will be, yeah, they'll be full, they will be full. That's our biggest nights right now, is Wednesday nights when the pickleball folks come to play at Rock Creek, and it's packed, a lot of people.
And where did you say the money was left over from?
This is squash six projects, whether that project was the turf fields or some of the other things that we did.
So this would just be finishing up using your squash funds?
Yeah, this is just the money that they, and Ms. Melissa Hawke is, again, extremely talented and making sure everybody's accounted for, and put some, put some savings back in our pockets.
She's a hawk, would you count as a hawk? You'll hear that, you'll hear that for the next four years while you're here.
Yep. Other questions for Matt? And you want to move that?
I would love to move that to tonight, if you would.
Good with that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have presentation of IFB number four twelve dash twenty-two, Highway Fifty-three in Thompson Creek Park Road, Roundabout Purchasing Manager Melissa Hawke.
Okay, let's see if I can recover from having all this silly up here.
That don't work, so you don't have to worry about it.
Okay, yes. So, we normally have a presentation on a monitor, as we know, and we don't have that tonight. So we do have copies for all of y'all of the presentations, so you can follow along. And there's some at the back of the room, where you can, audience, that might want to know what's going on with this project as well. So I'm going to try to work through this, okay?
Go ahead.
If y'all go to page two, we should say, it starts about in the background. In twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-one, the board approved three of the projects, and they are going to be at the, located near or at the corner of Dawson Forest Highway Fifty-three. Those stipulations for those approvals included a total of five hundred thousand dollars from the two developers for those permits to go through, and they're going to be paid to the county to actually do improvements to the center section. So we will have that five hundred thousand dollars there.
That was above impact fees, by the way.
This has nothing to do with that, that's right. It was stipulations that the attorneys and you guys agreed on with the developers and their attorneys to get the permits to move forward with the development. So the county has received that first two hundred and fifty thousand, and we spent just under fifteen thousand of that to do locate property corners and complete topographic fieldwork, and then the remaining two hundred and fifty will be coming from, it's actually two projects, but it's the same developer, and that'll come in once we get that final plat approved. And right now, they're still doing mass grading, so we're never near ready for that point, but it will eventually come into play. And once that comes in, we'll have four hundred and eighty thousand, eighty-five thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars in our pocket for, towards this project. And then GDOT had actually originally planned a quick response around that project, and that was going to allow for better flow from Dawson County, I mean, sorry, Dawson Forest into Highway Fifty-three, but then they decided that they weren't going to be able to complete that project, and we came together between the county and them, and we decided this would now be a county project. So with that being said, we asked for five hundred thousand dollars in a big money, and we got, were pre-filled out on October twenty-seventh last year. All we have to do is send them our contract, and fill out a little form, and they will send that to the minister, so we'll have that money. That brings up our funds to nine hundred and eighty-five thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars. And on January twenty-sixth, we did request the additional five hundred and sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and seventeen from GDOT. And I did talk to Kevin Mullins this morning, and he said that our request is back at GDOT, at the commissioner's office, and we should hear something in the next couple of days about that additional money. So we'll move on to page three, and as you can see there, as usual, we did that according to our policy, and we did receive two bids. So over on page four, if you flip over on the page, some of the scopes that we have that's included in this will be the traffic control, clearing and road, erosion control, stormwater, grading, excavating, concrete work, asphalt painting, and directional signage. And one lane will always remain open on all roads at all times during the contract. On page five, we showed the, the actual map of the new portion of the road for the Thompson Creek Park Road, and that's in red. And currently, Highway Fifty-three is like this, and then the Thompson Creek Road runs here this way. And with the realignment, it's going to come up at the top of that and come in at a direct shot, so that it'll enter that roundabout directly and be able to move forward without trying to come in at a diagonal area.
Can I ask you a quick question on that? In our development authority meeting the other night, it was brought up that we have the Trails Grant, or not Trails Grant, but Trails Program that we had a consultant do, and one of the trails leads across this intersection, and I don't think we addressed it on the front end when we were talking design concepts, but it appears on here that there is, I think it's mandated by the state that they have a crosswalk, even though it's middle of nowhere, they still have to implement and have that crosswalk in these plans, so it's included in these plans.
And they are, they're, they're on crosswalks at all four corners.
Okay.
And there's signage and the flashing lights and the whole nine yards that'll be there.
Okay.
So over on page six, this is actually the design that Cory and his group did in the beginning for the actual realignment, and it'll show where it's going to connect in, like we said before, here is Highway Fifty-three, the roundabout's going to be here. Instead of coming this way, it's going to come up at the top, so that it's a direct entry into that roundabout. So that's how that's going to work. At Wild Water and Sewer, they're going to be responsible for relocating the water mains, and we'll get in contact with them with RIS, and they're going to make sure they work with whoever our contractor is, so that they're out there at the right time and get that work done before the paving is done. The contractor will be responsible for compaction testing throughout the whole project, the realignment, and the roundabout portion. The contractor will be responsible for compaction testing throughout the whole project, the realignment and the roundabout portion. There will be removals between 10 inches and 12 inches of concrete under the pavement of the current road now, and that will be replaced as they move forward with the project. All curvy better over at the Thompson Creek side will be 24 inches at that portion. And since the project is more than a linear, I mean, I'm sorry, more than a one acre of disturbance, the stormwater line, I mean, will be required from the contractor who are working to be on that. The GDOT plans, if Chris can make sure I'm saying this correctly, did not actually address that. But we did address that with both our bidders, and they're prepared to move forward with that and be able to mimic what we had over at Toxic Creek and make sure that it's at GDOT standards for that. But it was not included in the plan.
Is Thompson Creek Park Road going to be, with it being realigned, will it be paved all the way to the park?
No, it's not.
Okay.
It's just the, just to a certain part, where the road kind of comes around like this, and right now it goes this way. When it comes up there, it'll be repaved from that point at that elbow, as I call it, straightening.
Okay.
To that point, let's look more in that meeting with corp engineers. They said that there is a federal grant to improve road access to federal parks. That might qualify if we can do that concurrently when we're doing this, because that road needs it bad.
It needs it bad, and I don't know, Chris can probably speak to it, but I know that Public Works has had an issue with, I don't remember what it's called. Brian, what's it called? The thing in the road on Thompson Creek Park Road?
Thing in the road.
Thing in the road.
The.
Thing in the road. No, it's like a, it's called something, and I should know, and I don't. But it's essentially like, Public Works has to refix it like every six months, and it's a huge safety hazard.
Yeah, and we patched it as of right now to bring it up.
Which we continue to do.
Correct.
But it's just a temporary fix. So I was thinking, if we could include something in addition to pave that road which needs it, and kind of put it all together as one large project, that would be.
Depending on how far they go back, will lower our costs as well to pave it to the boat ramps. And we were discussing it'll actually probably be cheaper if, once the contractor gets done, and they're done and they're out, our guys pave it to the boat ramp, and we can save money.
Okay.
Cool, we'll do it, yeah.
We're going to be moving on over to page seven. And this one is actually showing the, the GDOT prepared roundabout plan where it comes in the 53 and the Dawson Forest side. You'll see at the, the jar that you have where it kind of stops over there at the Thompson Creek Park roadside. I mean, that's part we just discussed. But everything that they're doing for the Dawson Forest and Highway 53 will be mirrored over on the Thompson Creek side. But of course, it's not just in those corners, or it'll be something that has been added in when we were doing Thompson Creek side. So, for the roundabout plans that we did receive from GDOT, they called for the milling and inlay and to tie an existing road at the Dawson Forest, Highway 53, and as we said, the new portion of the Thompson Creek Park Road. Some of these portions are going to require the full depth paving, and then others may not. So it'll just be whatever they get in there to see, and then as they move forward, they'll know what they're ready to do, according to what the law says. The concrete curving gutter will be eight and a half by 30 inches, and three types will be used, it's type one, two, and nine. It just depends on where it's being placed with inside the project. There will be monolithic truck pavements with integral concrete curb to protect the road. And that's the raised part of the inside of the curb, I'm sorry, inside of the roundabout. That's the monolithic truck pavement that usually looks like grit pavement. It's just stamped that red, and that's so that they can protect the road, and those bigger rigs when they come around, they'll have something to run over. And there will be reclaimed asphalt pavement using superpave, and the millimeters for that's going to also depend on where it's placed. It's 12.5 to 25 millimeters, just like I said, it just depends on where they're going to be using it in the project. The center of the roundabout will only be sanded, there won't be any landscaping other than the sod for easy maintenance. And the plan shows transverse rubble strips, which will be installed at the midpoint at both sides of the Highway 53 and the Dawson Forest, and that's actually going in forward, and that's the little.
And Public Works will be who maintains the roundabout?
That's still up in the air. It's supposed to be, what we were told way back when from District One, that they would be handling the maintenance, but the last I've heard is that they're not going to be handling that.
I think we've been contracting that out recently.
We did contract that out with.
But it would still be our, our responsibility fiscally, not GDOT's.
It has been.
Right.
Right, and certain ones, and certain ones they do, and certain ones we do. It just really depends on what it is. And they told us that that was going to be part of it, but then at the last times we talked with Sue Ann from District One, it's been taken out of the package.
When you're talking about maintenance, you're talking about like cutting the grass and keeping the stuff up, not if something happens to the state road, they're still going to fix it.
Right, right, this, this landscaping that they do.
And what about striping? Would that be us of the roundabout?
I really don't know that in that sort of.
Yep.
I think that's still kind of up in the air as to what they consider.
I just think we need to clarify maintenance of the roundabout and striping, because I know striping.
And striping state road, there's.
I mean, you would think, but if they put verbiage in there, you never know, so.
It should be theirs because it's Highway 53, but obviously on the Dawson Forest.
It goes to the Dawson County.
Right, right, it would not.
The other component of that is lighting, and lighting, like is there going to be?
Like the overhead lighting?
Yes, yes.
And we have learned just from something that we just went through with Highway nine, that it usually comes back into the city. But there was an actually an IGA with the, I'm sorry, the county. When those two got done there at nine going into coming, there was an actual IGA with GDOT and us that said we would take over that light. I haven't seen anything for this point, so I can't speak to that.
Is that in plans, is that included in the cost?
Yes, the lighting and everything.
The downlight, the low cost, yeah, okay.
So let's see where I'm at. Okay, we've got, back to what you were speaking about earlier, Commissioner Gaines, is the pedestrian crossing and the directional signs that's going to be there at the roundabout as part of that. And of course, all of these requirements will be mirrored over onto the Thompson Creek Park roadside as well. And if you'll look over on page eight, before we start talking about the actual pricing that we received, I want to say that before we opened the price, I did ask the contractors how they came about their pricing. Because I was really worried about what people's thoughts were going to be when they put money into this because of the fact that we did not have some of the plans that was needed on the GDOT side, and nor were their plans stamped or dated. And they stated that, because it started out as a quick response project for them, they don't date and stamp them. And so the, our contractors were real worried about that as well. We had many emails with them saying that this is all the way completed, and it should be able to be used to be built. But with all that being said, we did ask them, how did you come across this? Because there's stormwater and the grades missing in the plans. And in their own words, both companies did say that they came with this because of their experience with them and knowing what the standards are. I think that Vertical Engineering has an, I mean, Vertical, Earth has their own engineering staff, but J.G. Leon was going to have to hire somebody. And so that was a big difference. And so now that we're talking about this, with the pricing, Vertical Earth is lower priced. They came in at $1,547,834. But if you look at what J.G. Leon came in, theirs is $3,008,008. A huge difference. And like I said before we even opened it, that was one of the questions I asked, because I was real worried about what kind of pricing we was going to see. And so I feel pretty confident with Vertical Earth, and we have good experience with them before. And there were days you see their trucks all over the place when you're traveling Georgia.
They've been on the fly, about 360 miles.
Exactly.
Do we, we allow for change orders in this, or no?
Their contracts allowed change orders.
Up to a certain percent.
But it's discouraged, and it has a very big process that it has to go through. And it will have to come back to you because we're only approving the amount of the contract without any kind of change order. And there is no contingency of this.
To your knowledge, did we have change orders on the double roundabout at nine and Dawson Forest?
Well, we didn't do that. It was, we didn't have that contract, so I don't really know that yet. That was done by GDOT, so I really don't know.
That's just a, that's a big variation, I mean, those are two.
A huge.
Very big different numbers, and when you have that variation and kind of, while they're looking at the same scope.
And we did speak to that in, in the bid openings, that, and Vertical Earth, like I said, has worked with us many times before. They know that change orders are not going to be due in a drop of a hat, and that our budget is very tight. So that's the best we can go at with us not knowing really what might the outcome be. And so with that being said, we are at the actual closing of this presentation, and staff respectfully requests the board to accept bids received. Approve the contracts as Vertical Earth, any amount of the $1,547,074. Except the original $500,000 that we received from GDOT for the restricted demand funds. That was approved back in October 27th of last year. And then finally, you'll need to determine where the fund, the remaining $561,817 will be funded if GDOT doesn't approve our request.
And we've already made that.
Has it not?
Have we already made that request?
We have, we did that back on January 6th.
Yes, yeah.
And I did speak with them today, and it, they had to get a little bit more information, but it's backed up at the commissioner's office for them to make a decision on that. And he did say that we probably didn't know something this week.
Questions for Melissa? Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, next up, we have presentation of corridor study, Lumpy Campground Road Plague and Belt Director, Chairman.
Good evening, this is a project pretty much started by Public Works a couple of months ago, but we're here to request the plan to study the southern segment of the Lumpkin Campground Road. The Castleberry rezoning kind of by its light, we really need to know before we start approving some of their final construction plans and issued permits out there. We really need to know what needs to be done on Lumpkin Campground, so we need to, hopefully KCI can move this along once we have funding approved, so we can try to time any of the inside engineering system.
And that request is for $17,300?
Seventeen, three hundred.
We got $150,000 out of that?
Yeah, we got, we allocate, I mean, we had stipulation of getting money out of that one development to go toward.
Well, the language in the actual stipulation reads that they will pay it after somebody sees.
Yes, we need to have this done then.
Yeah.
But we could be, be.
Be remerged on that.
Right. Or they do some of the improvements.
Yeah, yeah.
But we just need to make permanent guarantees of what needs to be done. This is mandatory.
Do you need that moved forward?
I would like to, just to get ahead of it.
You good with that?
What, what portion of Lumpy Campground is this? For staff coming along to.
To.
Recast or to the, just to.
To the roundabout of Dawson Forest. The Dawson, I believe the Dawson Forest to 53, the heck. I'm not sure if the, we need to. You know, we started this dialogue back when that large project, 400, came into play. We really need to take another look at Lumpkin Campground, because every time we make a permit or the two, I don't mean, we always have one or two every month. We're just making, or we just can gather from before to step back and take a look at all these studies.
So you have the study that's been done from 53 to Dawson Forest?
Yes.
Okay.
Or Public Works.
Somebody has a study.
But, but it, in thinking about the con plan coming up, and we do need a transportation element that's, you know, we keep doing studies, we need to get money.
And just to ask the last question, we don't have a study on the other side from 53 to 400?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
We do have an excellent traffic study for when, if that large project came in, where a lot of that traffic was going.
Okay.
So that's a lot of great data that can be utilized, so we just need to take a bigger look.
Okay.
We've talked about that several times.
Yeah.
Is there economies of scale, having them do both at the same time? Just out of curiosity. There is.
Certainly could shift, I would think so. They did this study from the roundabout, if they'd agree, so we could have them have them do the whole thing and present it to us.
I mean, if you did it out together, I mean, obviously, there's more volume there, so.
It's, it's the same practice and process, it's just for larger strip.
Right.
And it seems like it'd be cheaper because it's not, you're not going to do one, and then you're back and using more resources to do another.
True, I could contact them tomorrow and see if I can get enough data through.
If you did that, would you be okay with us not moving forward tonight to see what you can find out?
Certainly.
Okay.
Because I would like to see it done, if we could do it the whole thing, because I wouldn't want to, us piecemeal it, I wouldn't want to have to change the results of the study either, I'd rather have it looked at as a, as a whole.
Correct.
I think that'd be a better approach.
It's got to be done, and from a physical responsibility, if we can get efficiencies out of it, then I think it makes sense.
Okay. Other question?
The other question.
What was your drive to get it done, approved tonight? Is there anything that's pending or hanging out there for getting it?
The design work is moving forward on Castleberry.
Okay.
Project.
So.
And there are some design issues, you know, that roundabout's been done, there's some drainage issues on that road. There's some improvements that probably need to be, that do need to be done.
Yeah, yeah. But two weeks.
If they're out there making messes, you know, they can.
Two weeks isn't gone.
No.
Okay. Other questions? Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Next up, we have presentation of request to split application for local maintenance and improvement grant, LME, funding for FY 2023 to the Georgia Department of Transportation, any manager of Vicki Knapp.
Ms. Vicki?
Thank you, Chairman. As you said, I'm here to present to you a request for the approval of the proposed LME grant application and request for GDOT funding. Annually, Dawson County submits to GDOT their request for funding for LME. LME stands for Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant. And this funding provides much-needed assistance to Dawson County in the maintenance and improvement of county roads. This year, the amount that we're going to request is, total would be $573,141.11. Of that, $440,877.78 would come from GDOT, and the remainder, $132,263.33 would come from the county. And the county match is already budgeted in the grant fund, so we wouldn't have to ask for additional money. And there are six roads that we're proposing to be part of this program. Freeland Road, Red Ryder Road, Vicki Drive East West, Cross, it's not my road. Milgrew Elliott, Ivy Road, and Dan Fowley Road. So we need to have this submitted by the end of the month. We need to have this approved.
Questions for Ms. Vicki?
And Public Works put this list together, they looked at what needed to be done, and I guess gave those, these roads those priorities.
Questions? Do you guys see that move?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on. Next up, the presentation of board appointments. First up, we have Industrial Building Authority, Tony Passarello replacing Sherry Weeks. That term would be January 2023 through December 2026. Carol Turner replacing Calvin Berg, term January 2023 through December 2025. Park and Recreation Board, Audrey Gu, replacing Spencer Wright, term January 2023 through December 2027. Him Goodyre replacing Heather Tierney, term January 2023 through December 2027. Whitney Gravett Bennett replacing Chris Cottawall, term January 2023 through December 2027. Calvin Berg replacing Tony Keller, term January 2023 through December 2027. And I'm guessing we need to move those forward, being that it's already January and almost halfway over. And that those people can get to work. Y'all good with that?
All right.
Right, next, we'll move on down to, I'm adding number 14. I provided you with a letter, spoke with our state representative, Will Wade, this past week, and he had requested, he's been working on getting us some additional funding for our new health department, along with our state senator, Steve Gut. He requested that we send a letter to the Department of Public Health and Kathleen Toomey, who is over that, and also CC them on that, so Ms. Kristen has put that letter together for us, and you have that before you. And we're requesting a million and a half dollars in funding to help us with the construction of the new health department. It would be used mainly for furniture. It would be used mainly for furniture fixtures and medical equipment to upgrade everything. We have two and a half million dollars, as you know, budgeted in splash seven for that. And we're also going to be looking at a community development block grant, a million dollars to help us with that facility as well. So, if we can get all these additional funding and grants, we'll be able to build us something up. They're going to ask us for another fifty years, like the one we currently have, and much-needed upgrades. And so, I would ask the board to move that forward as well and consider us sending that letter from that request. Y'all good with that?
Yes. And we, Billy, we already, have we already, have y'all voted to contribute the two point five million already?
Since fall.
Since fall.
Okay, so this is just to accept, just to get them to see if they can give us one point five million?
Yes.
Okay.
This would be an additional one that we have to develop.
Okay.
Health department is a joint state-county facility.
Right.
And so, we want them to participate.
Okay.
All right, next up, we have County Manager Report. Ms. Vicki.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, the key indicator report for the month of December, as well as a list of agreements and contracts, is in your packet. Um, we have an update on the Georgia Power EV Make Ready Program. Kevin Malone, Georgia Power Electric Transportation Project Coordinator, said they received a favorable outcome from the Public Service Commission concerning their ET Make Ready Program. They will receive additional funding for the next three years to support the GPC Make Ready Program, approximately fifty-two million dollars. They were, however, given some specific parameters and guidance on how the program should look this time around, as well as how the money should be spent. Kevin said his team is in the process of trying to finalize all this information with both his regulatory and legal teams. Further communication will be coming out later, once everything has been approved by the PSC. Also, there are a few employees I would like to thank for going the extra mile since our last meeting in December. First, I'd like to recognize IT's Cameron Burt and Will Shattuck. They took time away from their holidays to deal with generator, generator issues at the jail. And, um, facilities, Randy Patrick also took time away from his holidays to make sure a water leak that happened here in the courthouse was taken care of. Um, also, facilities did a great job on the health department renovation, and Chris Cole actually spent a weekend doing the flooring. So, I'd just like to recognize those employees. And finally, I'd like to welcome our new commissioners, Seth Stowers, and Alyssa Bruce. I know the staff and I are looking forward to working with you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Great job. Questions for the county manager?
I'll add the, the work that, um, the staff and the employees that contributed to our cold weather event, uh, where we set up an emergency shelter was, um, I participated in that, and, and Commissioner Bruce did as well.
Weird.
And, and just to see, you know, my heart was touched to see the, the outpouring of, of not only employees that volunteered their time, um, and, and staff that really put the thing together, but the citizens that came out and just brought donations. Um, that, that whole area was just overloaded with stuff that people brought in, and it just goes to show, that's, that's boots on the ground, serving each other, humans serving other humans. And it was, uh, it was touching and interacting with some of those people that are in our community that need help. And in that moment of desperation, we were able to help them. It was a really good act, and I'm just proud of our organization to be able to do that.
I want to echo that as well, and Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, but all the stuff that was donated that wasn't used in that weekend went to the place, correct?
Uh, yes, it sure did, yes.
So, it still went to citizens in our community that are in need, um, of those items for winter months, summer months, spring months, whenever they need it. It still went to a good place, and there was so much stuff collected, so that was awesome.
Any other questions for Ms. Vicki? County Attorney Report, Ms. Davis?
No report, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, that concludes our work session. We'll take about a ten-minute break, and we'll be back for the voting session. Thank you for your attention.